Well, then, everybody, we are live. Please welcome everybody to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. As a decision from the town, this meeting is for remote participation only. But the public welcome to participate in all open sessions involved. To join this meeting online via video, please click the Zoom link available in the meeting agenda. Should you choose to join via the Zoom app, the meeting ID is six three eight nine two nine one zero six zero. There is also a dial-in number available on the meeting agenda for this session. You can also view the meeting on Norton Cable Access Channel fifteen. And please feel free to email questions to the board ahead of the meeting or during the meeting to Paul D. Giuseppe, the Town Planner, whose email address is posted on the agenda. Again, every effort is being made to ensure the public can adequately access these proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, to cite best efforts, we'll post on the Town Norton's website, audio, video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible thereafter. Again, this is a remote participation-only meeting. A decision made at the town level for all town boards following the holidays with the unfortunately predicted spike in COVID cases in the Northeast. So, again, just a kind of quick review of online meeting etiquette, since we haven't been on here in a while. In terms of a full basis, the Zoom function of the meeting does have a chat feature that will be monitored, and if you submit a question via the chat, we will read it. We will read it into the record. Please avoid making personal comments or attacks in the meeting. Personal comments, attacks, et cetera, in the comments of the meeting. If you do, and they are deemed pertinent to what is going on, they will also be read into the record and attached to your name. So, again, let's please treat this like we're in a normal meeting and treat each other the right way. So, with that out of the way, I can call to order in general business. I don't believe we have anything for planning board business and policies at this time. Paul, do we have any bills or warrants to discuss a review at this point? I think you may need me to come in and sign some of it, correct?
Right, we have a WB Mason and a Verizon bill, the monthly Verizon bill, so.
Okay.
There's nothing else.
Nothing related to any decisions or anything like that at this time?
Correct.
Okay. And approval of minutes, I believe we had two sets of minutes that were sent out by Brian last week. Those were for past meeting of September the fourteenth and December the fourteenth, is that correct, Brian? I'm getting a nod, so yes. We'll go with the oldest. We'll go with the oldest first here. We have the meeting minutes of September the fourteenth. Obviously, it's been a little while since that session. But did anybody have any comments specific to those minutes which had not already been passed along to Paul and/or Brian?
Motion approved the September fourteenth meeting minutes.
We're just on the September. One's Alan, is that what you meant?
That's what I said, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, Alan, for the motion, and Steve for the second. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Okay. Hearing none. Wayne, I'll go to you first, but you were not here for this meeting, so I'm gonna assume that you'll abstain.
I did watch the video, but.
Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And similarly, did anybody have any comments related to the meeting minutes of December the fourteenth?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Steve, for the motion. Alan, I think your second beat Kevin's by just a hair there, so I'll go with that. And if we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion on that point? Okay, hearing none, I'll start with you, Wayne. Can you say that one more time? I think it was just a little bit muffled.
Yes.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So it takes care of those two sets of minutes. The next item on the agenda is a review of findings and conditions and potential execution of decision around Zero Leonard Street, always known as Blue Star Business Park Phase Two, which is tied into special permit numbers one one four four nine, one one four five zero, and one one four five one. Paul, I know there's been some discussion between you and Town Council in terms of some light edits to the draft decision. If you want to just summarize those as best you can, and if you want to call them up, we certainly can review them. But you had mentioned they were mostly organizational in nature.
Right, on the decision for the special permit and the site plan. And she said the certificate of approval for the definitive plan looked fine. No comments on it. But I have them, I can share my screen if that's what the board wishes. I mean, I have, I'm sorry, let me clarify, I have the latest drafts for both the certificate and the special permit and site plan.
Yeah, if you could pull those up, that would be great. I can see both some, at least one butter for this project, as well as a couple of members of the applicant. Again, just kind of to restate, the public hearing for this is currently closed, so we're not taking any additional evidence. But please, thank you for joining. So, Paul, whenever you're ready to share those, please go ahead.
Okay, I'll start first with the the certificate of approval, since it's the we really should vote on the definitive plan first. I mean, you've already voted on it, but in the pecking order of things, it makes sense to sorry, my.
Lot lines before buildings within the lot lines.
Right, sorry, my computer was acting a little bit, here we go. So, you all have voted to approve the definitive plan, but I do want to point out, you still need to vote on, there were several waivers that were identified in the process for the subdivision plan, as well as for the special permit and site plan, but this is the this is the current draft, I realize I need to change this, the heading right here. Oh, actually, no, no, people already voted, so that's fine. So, there weren't any changes to this, other, I should say, other than we were discussed through email that there were the issue of surety that the, what I just recommended here is, as surety will be dealt with after this has gone through the appeal process. We will have to come back between the twenty-day appeal period, and assuming if there's no appeal within ninety days from when this is stamped by the town clerk, that we'll have to not only sign the agreement for surety, but also, you will also then sign the final plans. You will endorse them as the action which is called for in our subdivision regulations, so the change I made here was as you can see in front of you, that rather than put a dollar amount, we're waiting to get the cost estimates from the applicant, so I just stated that when that the applicant is agreeing to a bond surety, which will be deposited with the town treasurer, that that amount will be approved by the planning board prior to the endorsement of the definitive subdivision plan, which is required in the Subdivision Control Act and our subdivision regulations.
Okay.
If you need to clarify any of that to the process, I'll be happy to do so.
Okay, and in terms of process, I saw lines for all of our, for the signature split members of the board. We're still operating under that. This isn't something that is filed with the registry, correct?
No, it does, it does get filed. And you, the board, you have a couple of options. You do have the sole signature authority that Chair would make you you do have the ability, because we did sign for both A and R's and definitive plans. Or we could work with you to figure out how we will get this form to all of you.
Okay.
Which, of course, from our end of it, it's much easier if it's just one signature rather than going after five or six people, but, you know, we will do whatever the board directs us to do.
Okay. I think we can lump all those together at the end of this, since they're all gonna fall into the same umbrella in that respect. But, okay. I don't have any specific comments related to the certificate of approval. Any members of the board have anything specific here? Again, this is just, this is a formalization of the definitive vote that we've already taken. And do we need to vote again on these waivers, or did we already cover those during our last meeting?
You did not vote on the waivers.
Okay, so we do need to take additional action, I apologize.
Yes.
Okay, so those waivers are, as I see the one in front of me, the Dead End Street waiver, and can you scroll down to any additional relief that's being free feet of cover for the storm drain pipes? And the scale on the map, which I feel like we need to just, is there a way to adjust our bylaws to avoid that, having that waiver involved in every single decision we make?
It would require a proposed amendment that would go to town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a few others like this too, where we go, you know, the scale is set and it doesn't need to be, that's just archaic.
Back to when we weren't just blowing things up on a computer, and needed to make sure that they were big enough to actually see the detail?
Right.
Okay. So, with those four waivers requested as part of this definitive certificate of approval, any comments from members of the board regarding either the certificate as a whole, the adjustments by Town Council? Or if you wish to proceed with acting on the requested relief?
Mr. Chair, it may be easier if you feel comfortable that enough discussion has been made to just entertain a motion, and then somebody can
Yeah, I didn't, I'm sorry if that implication wasn't clear, I didn't entertain a motion to act on the relief, because I know we've discussed those all of them specifically, other than the map one, which is, as Paul mentioned, a bit archaic.
So moved.
So, is the motion related to this first waiver? Because we should probably vote on those individually, so.
I, it's up to you, Mr. Chair, either way you want to do it, just note it in your entertainment, and we'll go from there.
Okay, I think that if we're going to have motions, we should probably go through these waivers individually. So if you'd like to make a motion on the waiver regarding the length of a dead-end street, then I would accept that motion. And look for a second.
Okay.
Thank you, Wayne, for the second. Is there further discussion on this waiver, or this motion regarding the waiver? Okay, hearing none, I'll start with Wayne.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, the next waiver requested is regarding the subdivision regulation six point six, section D. Again, this is the cover on the drain pipes at the I believe it's the north side of the building or the backside of the building, which has no windows and parking. Entertain a motion on this waiver unless anybody has any specific thoughts.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Alan, for the motion, and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Wayne, I will start with you again.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you, Paul, for keeping me organized here. The did we miss one at the top, or no?
No, it's just three.
Oh, it's just three, I thought there were four.
There is a few others on the other decision.
That's what I thought, I'm like, I thought there was more than three. So the final is the subdivision regulation, Article four dot two. Section V requires profiles of centralized streets in East must be a horizontal scale of one inch equals forty feet, and a vertical scale of one inch equals four feet.
So moved. Second.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Wayne.
Wayne, okay, and then Alan? Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this motion? Okay, Wayne, I will start with you again.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. And Paul, if we have an article to revise that language at town meeting, I think that I would be happy to present it.
Well, we can, our subcommittee, we'll meet later.
I don't think it needs the full court press.
No, no, no.
But yeah, if there are legacies of times gone by that can go away and save us ten minutes every subdivision and every whatever, we should do it. Okay. Again, these are standard conditions for a subdivision?
Correct.
Okay. Again, I'll just make sure everybody has had time to review these, Paul, I know some of the comments just came in from Town Council, you said, today.
But not on the certificate, not on this document.
Not on this document, okay, just on the decision, okay. So our remaining action with the certificate would be just to vote to approve this certificate, correct?
Well, you've already voted to approve it, so.
So it's just reviewing and if there are any additional comments to make them?
Right. And then sign it however the board wants to pursue the signing of it.
Okay. I think related to the certificate of approval and the rest of the decision, if anyone feels differently, please feel free to say so, but I think it probably makes the most sense just to keep this with single signer, given that we already have that paperwork filed with the registry. Does anybody have any objection? I'll make sure to bring in good pen, I guess. Okay, so Paul, that's how we'll proceed with these.
Okay.
Okay, so that takes care of that aspect of this this project, and we then move on to the decision and then the site plan, correct?
Right, this is now the special permit and site plan approvals, which, again, you've already voted on the site plan and the special permits. There are some waivers at the end, but you all wanted to make sure that the conditions, that you had your conditions discussed tonight. So I've added conditions that came out during the process. Again, I did make, there are some revisions in here based upon you know, feedback from council, there were edits I've made going back, and I've used track change on here to identify any of the, any of the changes from the original draft.
Sure. I know that you mentioned Julie had made at least one comment, correct, about exit numbers off of four ninety-five?
Yes, yeah, it was, and that's been, that's later in the decision, but it was renamed Exit Twenty-Seven. So that's in there. But that was the only comment I've received from the board.
Okay.
These modifications you see in front of you, these are, these were Amy's comments, just to reposition them, these were further down the list, so it's just moving them up.
Okay. And it's probably worth, once all of this is done, just to make sure that all the numbers go in order, because I know word is fun like that sometimes.
Right, right, after tonight, I will, whatever changes we make, then I'll go back and do the except changes and make sure that the formatting is correct.
Okay. Okay.
And of course, if there's anything you want me to stop at, I did make a change here at the bottom, I think I made this today, I realized that I had said they were extending the buffer, I meant to say berm that as part of the modification in response to Butter's comments and some of the board comments, that they had, as you recall, they extended the berm toward Janet Street, so that's why that change is in there.
Is the, is the fence shown on the plan?
It is.
Okay.
It is, it's on the site, it's on the site plan document.
Okay. Yeah, because it's not their property, I wasn't sure if it would have been. I didn't remember noticing it until now, so.
Yeah, I would recommend keeping it even, because the Butter's property is shown.
Yeah, and we had the specific discussions around it, so.
Right.
Okay. So Paul, if you want to just keep, and those are, those are ones that were moved?
Yes.
Did Amy give a reason for moving them, or just that's how she liked it?
Yeah, I think that's how she liked it, and as I went and looked at it, I think typically that's how we do it, these were much more of the procedural things. My sequencing was a little out of out of order. I think it reads better, it flows better. And this is just the criteria, standard conditions. And again, if there were things
Yeah, I just, I know hours of operation we discussed specifically, so just to make sure we focus on that.
Right, and here's number four, so number four is that the hours would be between seven AM to five PM, Monday through Saturday, starting daylight savings, which is March thirteenth, Monday through Friday, at six thirty to five PM, and seven to five on Saturday. And then number six is where Julie had the comment about Exit Twenty-Seven. And then I realized I made a mistake on the truck traffic leaving, I had copied this from Phase One, but trucks need to take a right turn out of the facility and then get onto one twenty-three to access the freeway.
Actually, there's two facilities, because the site plan governs both buildings, so it's not necessarily taking a left. They're taking a right off of, they're taking a right onto Leonard, but they're not out of the facility.
Actually, from the site.
I guess if the site is a unit, then yes, they would be turning right, you're correct. Yeah, but, yeah. Yeah, looking at the the proposed Yale Building, it would be a right, but the other building would not, so, but the site as a whole is, yeah.
Right, but this is from where the new road comes in and intersects at Leonard Street, so we don't want, we don't want construction vehicles
Going down through the neighborhoods, yes.
Right, so we're just trying to get them to four ninety-five.
Yes, which is generally where they want to go, but it's, right, yes. Okay.
This, number two, we have outdoor storage, but I, you know, we've called through the conversations, I you know, that we have a showroom there, and is it possible, or do we want to leave open an exception? Storage typically would mean supplies and whatnot, but do we want to clarify that whether that means if they had display models, things like that, would you want that clarified, or just keep it the way it was originally?
I'll let other members of the board speak, but I would tend to feel that that doesn't need, I don't, there hasn't been made any business case, or hasn't been shown on any of the site plans that would be an outdoor display area, or like a
Okay.
Anything like that there, as far as I've seen, and I don't think that I would tend to associate looking at a refrigerator outside.
Yeah, if there were other things, but anyway, sometimes facilities will do that, but, you know, if the board wishes, I can just remove that.
I agree with Tim.
Okay.
And then if needed, they could always apply for a modification, correct, if they needed that or want that of the building?
Yeah, or I guess we would work, you know, with the building commissioner to determine is outdoor display, storage, or you know, it might not be, so.
Paul, am I allowed to speak? Paul, it's Jeff O'Neil, am I allowed to speak? Mr. Chair?
Jeff, we're really not taking additional evidence at this. I we're really not taking additional evidence at this time, so I'd prefer that uh we stick to that hard and fast.
I just think on the site plan, it does show that display area.
Okay, well, um. Paul, why don't we leave this as a, leave this as open, um and we can go to the site plan. Um, in a moment.
Okay.
Um.
Uh I've removed number five because that ties back to a previous condition in the previous.
It does, yeah.
Um. And then uh this next one, just adding, this is a condition where. You know, typically, you know, when it comes to construction, uh you know, post uh planning board approval. You know, the the building commissioner and the conservation director are in pretty close contact with them, um. Uh but uh i- i- in the event that we initiated. Uh, might make sense for us to to go ahead and and give them a heads up, although I don't think we typically give surprise. I know we don't give surprise inspections, usually that's scheduled with the applicant, um but. So that why, that's why that was added.
Sure.
Then uh some of these others where you see.
Titles change?
Yeah, conservation, it it's now the conservation director, it changed about a year or two ago.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was related to the new um staff member.
No, it was before, it was before John's time.
Okay.
And then um I I've removed planning director because, and some of these because, you know, I've had no role, I mean, the role of reviewing uh. You know, the um, you know, uh uh stormwater facilities really falls on. Either conservation director or the building commissioner.
That seems to make sense to me.
Yeah. And in this case, conservation director to uh has said, with the order of conditions, there. Uh, that he'll be working with the applicant uh reviewing the construction of the facilities. Of the stormwater facilities and ensuring that the wetlands are protected as per the order of conditions.
Okay.
And then, um, so I I think it, but there, so we're now getting to the votes, of course, you voted on. The site plan and special permits, uh typically too, when we have a meeting to, after you approve the decisions, but uh. Need to add the conditions, we have a vote on the conditions as well, so approving the decision with the conditions.
Okay.
And then we got the waivers after that.
Before we do that, uh let's look, pull up the site plan, just in relation to that one note. Um. Just to make sure we all, um. Look at that again with a fresh set of eyes.
Yeah, let me uh pull. Right down. Okay, I'm pulling the plan up right now.
Thank you.
And I'm, oh, I'm I'm there, I'm just, oh, there we go, okay. I needed to just get my zoom. Zoom in working, um, okay, let me go share this.
Okay, right there, there's the entryway, and that is a sidewalk. Um.
I'm not.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure if that, um, the area underneath your cursor right now is intended to be. Um, a display area. Uh I don't remember discussing that at any point during the hearings. Um, if other members of the board recall it differently, please let me know.
I'm just looking to see if it might have appeared on. Other, uh it's infiltration. I'm not, right, this is, this should be where they would have put it, right on, this is the site layout. This is site layout for building twelve. Now, this is infiltration.
And so from, um, again, this is the, so for. I guess we're, the showroom, we clearly understand is meant to be on the left side of the building, um, right there. Um. I don't, I obviously, I think the outdoor storage standard condition, Paul, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is intended to kind of. Um, avoid a property having. Quit, for lack of a better term, junk strewn everywhere, is that the intention?
Right.
Generally. Um, I don't necessarily see that as a risk in this case, but, um. If we wanna look at that, um. That condition, um, in the. Um, special permit decision, um, one more time. And we can see how we feel about any specific wording in relation to that. So that is, yeah. So that was, that was your edit, Paul?
Yeah, yeah.
So we obviously had the the option to. Uh, take this edited condition as it is, propose initial changes. Uh.
So Mr. Chair, just to clarify, so Paul, you you're adding what's in red. Um. There shall be no outdoor storage, you're adding except for items for sale or on display related to the showroom, so she would, building nine. So it provides a more leniency to the applicant, to the tenant, with with the language that you added, correct?
Correct, yeah.
I I don't, I don't see the the need to add that, um.
Okay.
Myself.
And again, it might be, um, eh, you know, storage might eh might really refer to, as Tim mentioned, other. Storing of material and whatnot, this is, I I, you know, as I'm looking at this again, I'm thinking, well, this might be more. Like, you think about a retail store and they might put a table outside, we wouldn't call that storage.
Well, if the applicant hasn't asked for that additional language, I don't know why we we would volunteer, and actually. If I don't, I don't think we wanna encourage uh outdoor, I'm sure, I'm sure, um. Yale clients wouldn't do this anyway, but I would think if you if you leave valuable displays outdoors or show show them items, it might. Invite, you know, crime and theft and that kind of thing, as well as damage, so. If they haven't asked for it, I don't know, I don't think we would wanna add it in there.
Yeah, I guess the car layer would be like a home improvement store, they obviously have. Number of different things, whether it's grills or things uh displayed in front of the store, and they're usually kind of lined up and. Locked and chained together a little bit, but.
But again, if the if the applicant hasn't requested it, then it's really not our part to encourage further use of the property, right?
Yeah, I I was just trying to, you know, see if there was, you know, avoid a a potential conflict down the road, but again. If that's not an issue, or you know, there are other avenues to take other than putting it in here.
Yeah, I agree with Kevin, I don't equate storage to display at all.
Yeah.
So so in your mind, Alan, displaying. Something on the exterior of the building does not necessarily represent storage.
Correct, if anything, would be a separate line item, in my opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
In my, in my mind, storage is their storing. Refrigerators or whatever, their their product outside, they don't have room inside the store. Display outside, um displaying things for sale is different than storage, just in my eyes.
Peter, I do see your hand, um, at the moment, we're not taking comments from the public about this aspect of the hearing, we're just discussing the conditions. But we love that you wanna be participating.
So I could, I I I mean, I could just as easily remove that. Um, I think I overthought that one.
I agree.
Yeah, we can just put that back to the standard, um.
There we go.
There we go. Okay, so that is, did we go through the, I think we went through the entire document, correct?
Correct.
Um, are there any additional edits or comments based on these conditions? Again, this is the decision, this is not the site plan. Um. Related to this project.
Um, just one question, I know we have been keeping a log of conditions as they brought up, you know, during the multiple meetings. Um, I just wanted to ask, did all of the items that were, you know, documented on that log, um, do they all show up and appear in this?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, in this case, I was the one tracking it, so um a lot of them were, that came up, came from Horsley Witten, and they they made their way into this.
Great, thank you, Paul.
Yeah, I thought Horsley Witten did a good job of specifying, you should make this a condition, this could be a condition, uh when they went through their review. Um, and again, we do have, just to to point this out, we do list the hours of operation as twenty-four seven, um. Related to the decision and the site as a whole, even though that Yale has specified that would not be their standard hour of operation. But just to make sure that we're noting, um, that that is what we are approving in this decision, based on the industrial zone.
Hmm, um, why would we do that? Just thinking about the butters and neighbors.
That, I think that was discussed at the outset of the project, that, um. That that was something contented had said that they would want, but that, or that. I mean, I didn't think that I may have said that we would have to be approving it as a twenty-four seven. Or viewing it as a twenty-four seven operation, even though Yale had said they wouldn't operate that way. Because there's no way that we, because they could, I mean, we want them to be here forever, but if they're not here, somebody else could come in and wanna operate twenty-four seven.
And and if we approve this, they can do that.
Correct.
But if we just approve it based on the the guidelines and the and the limitations that Yale has noted that they that they need to run, then. We would restrict future tenants from operating twenty-four seven by doing that.
That would be the nature of that, yes, and that would be a question of whether the applicant would accept that condition or not.
Well, thinking for the, that the um, the butters and the adjacent neighborhoods, uh. I would think that that item four, we would wanna list the hours based on what appliance has noted that they would be operating. You know? Well, speaking for the applicant.
Jeff, no, I'm not gonna, no, sorry. Um, no, um, I I know we, we had that in the, I know we had that in the record. Um, I know when I voted on this, I voted on as a, this is an industrial building, industrial zone. So I'm expecting it to be, the hours to be twenty-four seven. Yale saying they're gonna operate less than that is a bonus, but. That was my expectation, if other people are moving forward with a different expectations, then, um, if we wanna put. If we want to adjust the conditions, then we can do that, but.
Um, you you took the words out of my mouth, I was gonna say the same exact thing, um, I was under the impression it was gonna be a twenty-four seven, um, at least for approval.
Do we, do we know, do we remember what Yale had stated that their hours that would be, you know, they would require to be open? And I understand that, you know, deliveries come at all hours of the night and that kind of thing, but if they had. Told us that there would, there would be limits to when they would be open, does does anybody recall what those were?
I wanna say they were somewhere around, like, six to six or something like that. Like, there'd be, trucks would get loaded up early in the morning, they go out and make their deliveries, and things would be wrapping up. Roughly standard business hours, maybe it would go until eight or something, so maybe six to eight. That's kind of what I was recalling from a general perspective. Um, I would have to review the records specifically to to know what the hours that they had stated. Um. But again, I wasn't expecting to to refer to that. Um, it's probably somewhere in the documents that we have, but, um. Because I know, I think it may have been in the initial letter from uh Dupree and Condyne at the start of the project, I'll see if I can pull it up as we continue discussing. Um, but, why don't we scroll through any additional, um. Notes or comments, Paul, uh, related to this?
Well, uh, we're at the, we're at the end, um. So, uh, really, there weren't any other uh conditions, uh again, everything that had been identified in the process I've. Put in here, um. And then they also.
I had more time to stall while I searched for that information.
Oh.
Um, no, I understand. Um. Okay. So are there any additional comments or questions, um. Regarding the decision itself, or is the hours of operations the only thing that. Um, we have further discussion needed on?
Because one one thing, uh uh and and understanding the butters concerns. Is one one thing, I I and and understanding the abutters concerns. With the hours of operation, um, you know, there were. Um, you know, um. Amenities improvements made. In that area between the residential areas and the building for for noise, for visual. Um, you know, understanding that that um that, you know, you know. The issues that are brought up, you know, we've worked, you know, board has worked with the applicant to try to address. Issues of noise and uh visual that, you know, something to consider as part of the hours of operation.
Yeah, those adjustments I think were would be effective all the time. It's not that of their.
Well, that's my point.
Kevin, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
I'm not gonna hold this up with that item, but I'm just thinking. I'm I'm the closest abutter to the um Wayfair building and the Pity Bose building and. If that was as close to me as uh Yale is to the some some of the abutters over there. I wouldn't want them operating twenty four seven, e- especially if they've noted that they don't need to. And if they move out and a new tenant comes in, then. You know, they could run a twenty four seven trucking operation from all based on this approval.
Correct.
This this language also was in uh the phase one decision, just, you know, as a reference.
No, I'm I'm I know that, um, there, you know, there there really were no no butters to phase one.
Yeah, that that's a big difference, right?
So if nobody else on the board feels the same way I do, I'm not gonna hold it up like I mentioned.
Hey, if we'd like to, if we'd like to vote on on that condition, we certainly can, uh, if you'd like to. Uh, and we could fill in the hours of operation based on what Yale had stated or what Condyne had stated uh on behalf of Yale. Um, if you'd like to make that motion, that's up to you.
Um, a condition on the conditions, huh? Uh, I kind of would and I. I wish we could hear more from Condyne, but again, if we have documented uh notes from Yale stating that they only are gonna operate from six AM to eight PM. Um, I don't know why we, I don't know why we extend the hours of operation beyond beyond those times.
I'm in agreement with Kevin.
Okay, yeah, I'd, um. So. So Kevin, you would, you're looking to make a motion to adjust the hours of operation condition. Uh, to match um. What Condyne had stated the hours for Yale would be at the site?
Yes.
And I guess this decision covers building twelve as well, correct, Paul?
Uh, yeah, correct. This is for both.
So we would need to split this. For if we wanted to do that, we would need to split this for building nine and building twelve.
Are are you asking me?
I mean, unless we would. Unless we're going to impose that restriction on building twelve, which we haven't discussed a tenant for, then we would need to split it, correct?
Oh, we say, yes, yes, definitely, um. I we, can we come back and amend it if we if once we get a tenant done, once Condyne gets a tenant for building twelve? Can we amend this, these conditions? If needed, if we need to.
I guess the question would be whether that would be viewed from a a minor modification perspective or a major one.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
We're we're restricting hours of operation to what Yale is asking for. It almost seems like now we're restricting hours that people can be on the site. So that road can't be used other than those hours. No one can't be in the buildings between those hours. It doesn't, they can't be cleaning the buildings. Um, off hours, it doesn't, it doesn't seem right to me that we're. We're changing this at this point.
So your feel, so your feeling, Alan, would be that you would not support that condition?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
We're we're gonna restrict access to this building between certain hours of the day. Um, I could see if it was a specific task that we were restricting, something very noisy. A specific use that we that would be restricted to daytime hours. Um, I don't, you can't restrict access to the building. You can't say in a decision, this building can't be occupied other than between. The hours of eight AM and six PM or whatever the hours is, it does not seem right to me at all.
Okay. That the, that. There doesn't seem to be a majority of members who would support that change if we wanted, if we did a formal vote. Is that what I'm hearing?
Probably, and and that's not my intent. I I'm just. Taking what Yale told us, like I don't know what their postodial schedule is, or if they have a third shift that. Mans the phones. I'm just going off of the hours they told us.
Um, yeah.
For operations, but yeah, it it and we can we can take a vote and it'll. Probably not be approved, but. Um, I would like like to make a motion to change. The condition number four from hours of operations of twenty four hours, seven days a week to. The hours of operations as stated by Yale clients.
Specific to building nine?
Uh, yes, specific to building nine.
Okay, so you've made a motion. Is there a second? Okay, there is a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on that motion from members of the board?
To be clear, a yes vote would change the hours of operation, a no vote would keep them as written.
Correct. Um, my order here is moved around in the meeting, so Steve, I'm gonna start with you.
No.
Alan?
No.
Wayne?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I will vote no. So that adjustment um does not carry. So again, the condition states twenty four seven operation. Um, and again, we can vote on the decision. Um, as a whole, with that with that condition in mind as twenty four seven operation. Jeff, I do see your hand up. Um, I hope that we've addressed that the concern you were, um. Thank you. Okay. Um, do we want to review the site plan before we vote on the decision itself? Um, or do we want to act on this piece of paper in front of us digitally and then move on to the next? I would tend to go with the latter course, unless anybody feel, other people feel differently and want to look at the site plan uh again. So I'd be looking to entertain motions on. The decisions and then we have some, um. Some additional relief below.
Make an abortion to approve this decision as written.
Thank you, Alan, for the motion and Steve for the second.
Um, the discussion with the chair, we should probably clarify that we're approving the decision with the conditions as noted.
Thank you, Kevin. Alan, do you agree with your, for your motion?
Yes.
And Steve, do you?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Steve, I will start with you again.
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, so the additional relief that we have here. Um, again, these are the relief items that we voted on at the last meeting. Paul, is there any additional action needed on these?
What, just the waivers?
Fun, fun waivers, okay. Again, plan scale. Two plan scales.
Yeah.
Okay, so these should be two separate motions. Entertaining motions on waivers to articles one seventy five dash fifteen point seven. Okay, thank you, Kevin, for the motion and Alan for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Steve?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And one more time. Would you like to make a motion on the second plan scale waiver that we need to make?
I'll motion to approve it.
Second.
Thank you, Steve, for the motion and Alan for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Steve?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, uh, the waiver for article one seventy five. Dash eighteen point five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, again, this is for. Requires one tree per thirty feet of linear frontage. Is there any discussion on the motion, which does have a second? Hearing none, Steve?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yeah.
And Kevin? Did I not ask you already?
That's a yes, thank you, Tim.
And I will vote yes. I saw that Paul had filled in the X right as I was speaking and I had a motion, had a moment of, did I already ask him?
I was a little quick, sorry.
That's okay.
I'm trying not to anticipate, so.
Okay, um. Again, this is for a one deciduous tree every thirty feet on. At least three sides perimeter of an outdoor parking lot for twenty or more cars.
Second.
Thank you, Steve, for the motion and Alan for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Steve?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, is that all of the waivers that we needed to act on, Paul, related to this?
Yes, that is it. So we will start getting this processed immediately as well.
Okay.
And uh.
Something for Alan, something for Alan to sign, so I don't feel lonely.
Well, I'll get it to you to confirm it's correct first, Chair.
Well, yes. Okay. And the last item, I believe, is the site plan, correct?
You you voted on that already.
Oh, that's.
Sorry, sorry, Chairman, not to interrupt. Paul, you have Mister Hornsby twice and a second by Mister Hornsby.
No.
Last condition.
Sorry. I do that sometimes.
That that was Alan. You you would vote it, motion and second if you could, Steve, I understand.
This thing along.
Okay. So Paul, is that? That completes our actions required related to this project at this point?
That is everything, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that that's it's complete.
Okay. Once you have the the finalized decision over to me, I'll give you the sign off and we'll proceed with filing.
Great.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda this evening. Uh, is a public hearing for special permit one two five eight seven for zero South Washington Street. Um, that is an application for the construction of a billboard ninety feet tall, forty eight feet wide. Um, I assume we have um members of the applicant. Here to discuss, Paul. I don't know them by name, so I'll let you call them out if that makes the most sense.
So we're here, Mister Chairman.
Hello, how are you?
Evening.
Good evening.
Uh, if you're ready, Mister Chairman, we can proceed. I'll I'll wait for, unless you have some housekeeping matters to do on this or read the notice.
Uh, you can go ahead and uh and proceed. We do have documentation in our folders. Uh, including plans, um, as well as letters from abutters. Um, so, uh, generally, in terms of. My usual way of proceeding would be to allow you to go ahead and present, uh, allow. Um, the town staff to restate any additional context or. Um, items they have that's been under discussion with different peer reviews or things like that, and then we go from there. But uh, please go ahead and get started.
Fine, uh, for the record, Mister Chairman, members of the board, uh, my name is David Menugian. I'm an attorney in Attleboro. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, uh, American Outdoor Advertising. With me also this evening is the applicant's principal, Stephen Ross, and also a representative from our engineering group. Uh, Richard Reed from Lighthouse Engineering. Uh, we do have the ability to share documents on our end. Uh, if need be, Mister Chairman, uh, I'll take you through a brief presentation and then open it up for questions for the board. Uh, it's a fairly straightforward matter and we did get, uh, I also addressed some of the opposition in my presentation. Uh, this is an application for a so-called digital billboard sign on property at zero Washington Street owned by the Musto family. Uh, its assessors map twenty five wide eight dash eleven. Um. We propose to put up a uh sign, a digital sign on property that's. Three hundred and thirty two thousand square feet, which is uh considerably more than the ten thousand square feet needed. Uh, the property is in the industrial zoning district. Uh, the sign will be uh not to exceed fourteen. Feet by forty eight feet and the height will be not in excess of uh ninety feet. Uh, we're also not within one thousand feet of any residents in the area. Uh, and we're not within a thousand feet of another digital billboard structure. As the board may know, that uh this special permit, if granted, would be one of um. The first approval we need, this is subject to mass highway approval of granting their permit for the sign also. However, it's traditional to seek the local approval first. Um, uh. As I said before, we're in an industrial area, which is the only area that I believe under the bylaw. That the sign in question could be placed. Um, we are aware of a letter of opposition from Stay America, who owns and operates evidently the Extended Stay Hotel. Uh, our sign is approximately a hundred feet uh away from their property on the Musto property. Interestingly enough, uh, Extended Stay America has. Interestingly enough, uh, Extended Stay America has been using the Musto property without permission, and have made improvements since two thousand and four considering of a grassed area and a picnic table that it seems to be used for their guests, uh, for an area for dog walking and, and dog use. But, uh, to the best of our knowledge, the Musto family has not indicated that, uh, Extended Stay use that spot. Uh, of note, also, also addressed in Extended Stay's opposition is that uh, they're working with a competitor, uh, Carroll Advertising, for a placement of a sign on Extended Stay's property. What they're saying is that a Carroll sign, if that goes forward, would not pose the same interference with their guests. Um, our representations and assertions with respect to that letter of opposition is that it's fairly disingenuous. Um, I think that this is, this opposition is being asserted for competitive reasons, and as the board may know, for the granting of a special permit, competitive reasons aren't uh, an issue or a reason that the board can take into consideration. With respect to the so-called opposition based upon interference with their guests, uh, the hotel is approximately, uh, three stories, which is give or take thirty to forty feet high. Our sign will be ninety feet high, and we submit that it's, will not present any, um, uh, problems with the, uh, guests. Uh, we've also submitted, uh, an amended lighting plan that shows that we have louvers on our advertising structures and lights, and those louvers, uh, as a conclusion, the report states, uh, indicates that uh, uh, the area of the Extended Stay property, uh, will see al- an almost undetectable difference in ambient light after the installation of the digital billboard sign. So, we respectfully take issue with the opposition, uh, that we would interfere with their guests and their stays, whether it's a week or thirty days or whatever. Uh, the other thing is that if they're anticipating a sign on their property, I would assume the sign proposed by Mr. Carroll at some point would also indicate that it would have the same louver system that we have. But, uh, the reasons for the opposition set forth by Extended Stay are basically anecdotal and, uh, based on supposition, there's no engineering proof that they have that it would pose a, uh, a problem with their guests. And as we have in our lighting study that you have in your files, with the louvers, it would present no problem to their guests. Given the louvers and the, uh, position of the sign over the structure, I don't think it would, uh, be any problem for the Extended Stay folks, and we would, um, uh, strongly disagree with the assertions in their opposition letter. Uh, we also want to note that prior to us filing the application for special permit with this board, we filed with the, uh, uh, select board a, uh, mitigation agreement that calls for approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in mitigation fees. Um, that was signed and submitted to the select board prior to our applying for this. The select board has not acted on it yet, however, we want to point out that this board's ability to act on our application uh, has nothing to do with the mitigation agreement before the select board. Uh, that was not a criteria as contained in your bylaw, however, it is, we assert a good deal for the town with respect to the mitigation offered in that. Um, the, uh, uh, Musto family, as you know, has owned this property since nineteen eighty-five. They've been paying taxes on essentially an unapproved parcel of land for all those years. This would have allowed the town to, um, uh, also have a, a tax base on this property with that improvement. Uh, we do have a lease with the Musto family in place. It's conditioned upon getting not only this permit, but the other permits that we need to allow for construction of the proposed sign on the Musto property. Uh, uh, the, uh, as I said, we have a schematic of the sign, uh, that was presented with the application, uh, given the, um, digital presentation of this matter in the Zoom meeting, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, that's a brief overview of the process. We'd be happy to open it up to any questions the board members may have, and we can also pull up any specific plans to go over them. Um, but, uh, that concludes our brief presentation with reserving right to rebuttal and answer the questions of the various members.
Sure, of course. Um, I know I have a couple of questions which may, I apologize, uh, may ask you to put on your lighting engineer hat a little bit here. Um, Paul, are there any, um, matters that you think you wanted to give us additional context around in terms of, um, this application prior to us going into questions about the site itself and the project?
No, at, at this point, we've met, the staff met with, um, with the applicant, uh, a few weeks ago, a month ago. Um, but, a- as, as Mr. Minugian mentioned, that they're working with the select board and the Conservation Commission at this time.
Okay.
Uh, but one other thing, Mr. Chairman, we did, as part of our submissions, uh, provide you with a, a quotation for restoration bond amount, so that's also part of the submission.
Yes, I believe that, um, that was sent to town staff any yesterday or the day before. Um, so I think we have it, but, um, not a whole lot of time to review it in advance of the meeting this evening.
Certainly, and that's obviously subject to the, uh, board's consideration and the input from the staff also.
Yes, of course. Um, okay, thank you, Paul. Um, I guess, Mr. Minugian, I'm gonna go ahead and kinda start off here um, with just a question for you or, um, anyone else tied to the project. You mentioned the louvers and kind of the, the lighting kind of plan. Um, can you give me an explanation of how the louvers block the light without it obviously negating its purpose as a digital billboard?
Uh, sure, I think, uh, Steve Ross is with us, uh, Steve, could you address that, please?
Absolutely, my name is Steven, my name is Steven Ross, I'm with, uh, American Outdoor Advertising. And what happens is, uh, plastic louvers are placed on the digital sign, uh, by each of the LED lights, and it deflects the light, so it's only seen from roadway, traveling public, and there is no ambient light that's spread out and around. And, uh, we had a study done by Watchfire, which is one of the largest visual sign companies in the world. They have over sixty thousand um, LED signs operating currently in the world, and their study shows that no light would, uh, affect the uh, hotel next door. And there is a study that we sent to the board, uh, for your review.
Okay, so, from, uh, layman's terms, it's essentially, it's a, think of like a window blind in front of the billboard that narrows the view, the possible viewing angles. Am I being too generic there?
That, that, that's a good analogy, or if you're at a, um, a stoplight, and from the angle, you can't see the light turn red, yellow, or green because you're not meant to see it, it's only meant to be seen by the cars directly in front. So, that probably is a better analogy, that you wouldn't view it from the side, you only view the stoplight turning red, yellow, or green from the front.
Okay, so it's around each individual, you said LED, but I'm just gonna say bulb for lack of, uh, my lack of sophistication.
That's correct.
Okay. Understood. Um, other members of the board, do you have any specific questions regarding, um, Mr. Minugian's presentation or the, the lighting plan or the, any of the documentation that we have around the project? I do see your hand, if I can get to you in a second.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I think it would be good for the public in general if, um, Mr. Minugian or somebody from, from the outland side can put up the, you know, the, the, uh, location on, um, on a map of where the sign would actually be. And I drove around the Extended Stay American, um, building today, and I had assumed that the sign was gonna be on the other lot, on the other side of them, but it, but now I'm looking, I can see, uh, the Musto's property is actually behind them, but I'd be curious to see where exactly the sign is gonna be on that property, as it is kind of an L-shaped, uh, property, uh, lot. And, and I know we have that, but I'm just saying for the benefit of the general public watching this.
Steve, you can, um, as I put these up, you can comment on the, uh, location and, uh, the first one, uh, that we're showing, or, um, uh, Richard Reed from, um, Lighthouse could comment on this plan and then we'll go through them.
Okay.
Steve, can you see that plan?
No.
Okay, well, this is a plan, uh, that shows where a thousand feet from
I'm not seeing anything being shared at the moment, Mr. Minugian, I'm not sure if, uh,
Okay, well, let's see.
Before you get too far into what you're saying, I wanted to make sure I stopped you before, uh,
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't know why this isn't sharing. It shows it on my screen, well, let's see.
Did you, did, did, did you scroll down to, uh, and see the highlight when share screen comes up, and then push on share screens?
Let's see here. Okay, I think I see what I get wrong. Sorry, your request is invalid.
Let's see, Paul, I think I have it up here, so I can go ahead and, uh,
I have it too, so, you need it, but
That's okay, um, it's, uh, let's see, can we all see what I'm trying to share here?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So this is the Extended Stay America. And this is, here's a manufacturing building in South Washington Street. And the location of the billboard as proposed would essentially be where my cursor is here, correct?
That's correct.
Um, and just to click, this is where it sits on the map and the thousand-foot radius.
Correct.
And this is the lighting study that you had provided via, um, Watchfire.
Correct, and that screen shows you the effect of the, um, ambient lighting and the radius it will, it would show. And you can see it would not materially interfere with the, um, uh, the, the building and the guests. And if you scroll down, Mr. Chairman, to the next slide, you'll see it from the other direction, uh, which is a, a little broader because it's intended to be of a bigger scope because there's less interference that's potential there.
So the louvers wouldn't necessarily be, um, in place on this side because they're not needed?
They're in place, but not to the same extent as the other side for that reason, yes.
Okay. Okay. Um, Kevin, does that, um, kinda satisfy you what you were looking for at this point?
Yeah, and, um,
Okay.
I didn't realize it was, it's basically right on the corner of the two lots. I was actually hoping it was further up, uh, north on, uh, on the lot, but that does, that does explain the concerns of the, um, the, uh, extended care, uh, I mean, extended hotel, uh, people.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's very close certainly. Um, yeah, the, the lighting study is helpful. Um, okay, so I'm gonna stop sharing here at the risk of, um, some other notification popping on my window here.
Hmm, um, and Mr. Chair, just, um, it would be good to understand maybe the use of, of the billboard, digital bill- billboard. I know, I think it might have been Carroll Advertising that is only maybe a hundred yards up the street, if I'm wrong, now correct me, but, um,
But we're a thousand, we have to be a thousand feet away from that sign.
Okay, and so, when we went through the approval for the one that's already out there, uh, they explained the use, the purpose, the fact that there would be um, alerts posted on the billboard in the event there were any emergencies and that kinda thing, um. And, uh, it seemed to make sense, I think they had mentioned that the closest one was maybe up in Northboro, as, as far as four ninety-five goes, and then maybe further down ninety-five, um. And it seemed like there was a need, uh, for a, a digital billboard in this part of the, the state. And I'm just kinda curious, maybe you can share with us, maybe what your uses would be, kind of the marketing behind it, and um, how it would, um, supplement, uh, what's already there in the other billboard, or maybe fill a gap that's not being met with that billboard. I'd be kinda curious on just the overall goal, I guess.
Absolutely, Steven Ross here. Uh, so, yes, um, billboard advertising is a great way for local businesses to reach local audiences. Um, and digital billboards are a great way to have advertisers change up their messages on a more frequent basis. Uh, they're very effective, uh, they work very well for local, uh, regional, national advertisers. Um, we do have dedicated hours for the town of Norton, fifteen hours per month, per face. Uh, we also have dedicated time for State of Massachusetts, which is fifteen hours, uh, per face, per month. We also are tied in to the FBI for Amber Alerts, uh, or any emergencies, whether it be uh, weather or road closures, or, you know, God forbid, uh, you know, tornadoes or, uh, you know, the, the COVID. So it's a great way to get, uh, whatever messages are important to the general public, uh, to them, as well as a great way for advertise, to get their mess- advertisers, to get their messages out to them as well.
And, and, and this may go beyond our role as an approval, uh, board, but, um, I would think that, uh, there's a lot of redundancy here and maybe excess, and I don't know you know, if the Norton Police Department, given that if there's an accident on either direction, they'll be responsible for, um, you know, handling it, or, um, it, it seems to, to me, just on the surface, is getting excessive. To have two large digital billboards, you know, stacked close together in a short section of road, but again, not a reason to, not a reason to decline it, just my own personal comments.
So, so the other digital billboard is about twenty-six hundred feet away. Uh, the state mandates established spacing between digital billboards. In, uh, other towns, there are local digital billboards that the town has, um, enjoyed the public service aspect as well as the, uh, the mitigation, uh, revenue from them, uh, as well as assisting for other emergencies, so it's proved very beneficial to numerous communities across Commonwealth.
Can, can you state some of those communities, maybe perhaps where they are?
Uh, sure, so, uh, you've got the city of Boston, uh, you've got Medford, Stonem, Stonem, uh, Lawrence, Lowell, Peabody, um, Walden, Westboro, Wareham, um, Methillin, um, Quincy, Canton, West Bridgewater, Brockton, Fall River, and probably several more that I just am not thinking of.
And, and Mr. Chair, through you, are, are any of these on highways, or are they like a, a combination of?
I know, a bunch of them are on twenty-four, so, uh, yeah, there's a bunch on twenty-four and Lowell's probably Route three and four, Route three and four.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair, through you, um, most of these digital signs, as we all know, are on, um, federal highways that are controlled by the NASA Department of Transportation, uh, for these purposes. The regulation that you have in the town of Norton, Norton, uh, mirrors the state regulation that they have to be at least a thousand feet apart so that we don't have this proliferation of signs very close together. So, the bylaw anticipates that that spacing is required, and I think that's the safeguard that the prior gentleman referred to on the, on the board, so that, you know, we're not asking for a variance first from the Zoning Board of Appeals to make this closer. Uh, we think that we have ample space between the two signs, and that, uh, we don't pose a risk to the traveling public. Um, the other matter that was, uh, the, the first part of the gentleman's question that he, uh, answered, that he asked, um, as part of our mitigation agreement that was offered to us by the town, we've agreed that, um, we share the same free advertising time that the state has with the town of Norton, so you have that. But also, there's a provision in there saying that all businesses located in the town of Norton will be entitled to a fifteen percent discount of the cost of advertising on the, this particular billboard, so we've contractually agreed to that too. Of the cost of advertising on the, this particular billboard, so we've contractually agreed to that too, so that. Uh, who afford Norton businesses a uh ability to advertise on the billboard at that fifteen percent discount. So that's part of the use question that the gentleman indicated before.
Thank you, Mister Mnuchin. Um, if any members of the board have any additional questions, otherwise I know we do have um, uh, Butter here who. Uh, has been waiting patiently to speak, and I've been ignoring her, I promise not at all.
Don't ignore me.
Uh, so, um, Miss, the Coolidge, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. We do have your, your letter um from um earlier today that we did receive. Um, I know I was able to read it, I'm not sure if everybody has had a chance to read it, but. If you, if, um, I'm sorry, I was referring closer to the board members, but in terms of um. If you wanna just give a summary of uh your comments here, uh, for the members of the board.
Sure, um, Happy New Year to everybody personal for us. Uh, my name is Judy Pickledge, and I represent Extended Stay America. Um, the owning entity of the hotel is legally ESAP Portfolio LLC. Um, and, you know, we've been owning, we've owned and operated this hotel since two thousand and three. Um, we have brought an extensive amount of business into the Norton community. Um, the, our hotel, as the, the name indicates, is. We cater to a more extended guest, somebody that has to be in the area for longer than, you know, seven nights. Um, our average stay is probably more closer to that eighteen to twenty, twenty night stay. Um, so not only do we, we provide accommodations for locals as well as. Um, uh, people visiting the community, but the guests that, that we are accommodating also. Provide services and utilize other local businesses such for fueling, food, uh, beverage. And, and work reasons, um, and so. While we have not owned the property quite as long as, as our adjacent owner has. We have been operating this hotel since two thousand and three, and we have been, you know, paying taxes since that time as well. Um, we reviewed the documents that we, that we had received. And we did not see this revised lighting plan, um. Given that we had just learned about this um new, this billboard and the, the hearing. Um, in the last few days, we certainly have been had a chance to retain our own um study. But what we do have is experience, we owns over six hundred hotels throughout the United States. Um, and what that experience has taught us is that anytime there's a billboard within a hundred feet of our hotel. We have guest complaints and guests complaining about the lighting and having to open the windows and, and see a billboard. Um, as some of you had mentioned, you know, this site is extremely close to our property. It's ten feet off of our property line, it is right up against us, and as um. A- as we heard earlier, yes, we have been in conversation with Carol Advertising about putting a billboard on our property. Um, however, what, we were very um cautious. And what we were doing is we were putting it between our building and, and the highway on the side where there are no guest rooms. The, our guest rooms run along the sides of the, the long sides of our building, because we're, we have a rectangular building, um, and so. There's rooms on, on both sides of that, on the ends, there are no rooms, those are just um the stairwells and emergency exits. And so that's where we were contemplating putting a billboard. So that it wouldn't impede upon any of the guest rooms and the, and the guest windows, um. And, you know, so. Just the way that it's located, what we saw from the application, you know, this certainly is going to have. An, an effect on our guests, and our guests will complain, and that will affect our occupancy levels, or expect, it, it will affect. The, our, our rates, it'll affect our brand, and um, and ultimately it'll affect the city because. They will see less income from, because we will see less income. Um, you know, I just think that this, the signage is entirely too close to the, to the building, to afraid to be viable.
Thank you, Miss Pickle. Um, and I totally understand that you have not had an opportunity to review uh the updated lighting plans since, um, I know. We didn't receive it until, um. Yesterday, the board didn't receive it until, um, I believe yesterday afternoon, so.
I, I mean, and that's fine, it's just, um, and, and like I said, with owning so many hotels throughout the US. We do have billboards that, that have these um, these panes on them and, and, you know. We were told it wouldn't happen, but it does, you know, guests complain whenever there's, there's light coming in. They're staying for long periods of time, we have a lot of people that are, you know, we have first responders and emergency workers. And they wanna, they don't want to have to contend with, like, like, they wanna get a good night's sleep, so that they can do their jobs.
Understood, thank you for your comments. Um, and uh, obviously for members of the board, we don't have the application. From Carol Advertising in front of us, so there's nothing for us to act on. But obviously, if the digital billboards need to be a thousand feet apart, um. That one would not be a thousand feet away from this site, so. Are there any additional questions from members of the board, if you'd like to ask, um. The applicant again, or um, Miss Pickle, if you'd like, Pickle, if you'd like to answer any questions, you don't need to. Um, I'm not sure if anybody has any additional questions for you.
Mister Chairman, I got one for you, or possibly Paul, um, I'm wondering if a. Peer review of this lighting study is appropriate in a situation like this?
That's certainly a question to consider, um. Paul, I'm not sure, um, what the process would be for that. Um, from what I understand, the report submitted, the lighting study submitted by the applicant. Um, is one that's being, that's been um, being completed by Watchfire, who's the. Installer of this, who would be the installer of this particular billboard, and the one that has the. It's their special louver technology, I think, um. So I'm not sure, um, whether that would be something we would generally pursue, or who we pursue that with. Do you have any thoughts, Paul?
I, I don't know of lighting companies, but if, if that's the direction the board would want to go, we would try to find a company similar. That could look at this and, and confirm that, um, there's no, whether or not there's an adverse impact. You know, to the adjacent properties.
I guess I'm thinking of more of a lighting engineer or something, uh, rather than another billboard company.
Right, right, it would have to be some sort of engineering firm.
And that would obviously be something that we would need to um discuss with the applicant. Um, since with a, a peer review, that's generally something that, um, is funded by the applicant.
Mister Chairman, if I may, through you, was there a peer review done on the last sign that you approved? Which is the only sign on, on the highway?
Uh, I don't, I would have to recheck, recheck the minutes for those meetings, um. I don't believe there was.
There wasn't.
Thank you, Paul.
There, there wasn't, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I just wanna stress, obviously, whether this is a period or not, it's gonna be an discretion of the board, but. I, as an advocate, I have to assert my client's position, which is this. I think that I appreciate the opposition of Extended Stay, I understand what they're trying to say. I don't think it has any merit, it's clear that they're trying to gain a competitive advantage to put this decision off. So that they can get an application before the board, and then assert, we want our, our land. Because this sign won't bother our tenants or our customers. It's clear that the underlying purpose of that opposition is either to delay or defeat this, so it's competitive purposes. That sign in that lease or sale of a portion of their property to the Carol Advertising. Is also, is for competitive purposes, they're gonna make a profit, just like my client will. So that I have to assert that the fundamental basis for the opposition of extended stay is. Presented by their representative is solely for competitive purposes, and that I would ask the board to. Go with caution down this road of a peer review, to show that the lights are um. Uh, not gonna intrude on the guests, we've got something, we've got it signed, um. But I think that one line that they put in there, in their opposition, it says, oh, by the way, we are talking with Mister Carol. And we're gonna put a sign so it won't bother our guests, well, you know. We don't know where that sign is gonna be, uh, it's gonna be obviously ninety feet high, uh, I think common sense has to come into this. Uh, so that's my client's position, Mister Chairman, we will obviously, um. Uh, if the board wants an engineering uh study, a peer review, uh, I'll have Mister Ross comment on that to see. If he's gonna fund it, but before we have that, we have to see what the cost is gonna be. But I would respectfully request that the board not go down that road and make a decision based on the merits of what we've presented.
I understand your position, Mister Mnuchin, um, and I understand. Um, I also understand Miss Pickle's position of. Seeing a billboard ten feet from our property line and understanding kind of what that is. Um, and I think that, um, Miss Pickle, I do see your hand, your virtual hand up there again. I don't wanna get into a back and forth argument in terms of, um, two people trying to put words in each other's mouths here. Um, but, um, I'll allow you to make, just kind of, again, to speak to uh members of the board. Um, and understand, uh, kind of, we have your letter, we understand your comments, um, so.
Yeah, now, the only thing that I did wanna add was that, um, you know, I, I. For full disclosure, I wanted to make sure that everybody realized that we were talking to somebody else on the billboard. That being said, if, even if we weren't, we would be at, we would be opposing this. Just because of the location, so whether we get a billboard or not. We're still going to be arguing that this is going to be a nuisance to our property.
Thank you, Miss Pickle. Um, I do see an additional hand raised, um, Lighthouse Land Surveying. Um, sir, if you could just, um, state your name for the record, as well as kind of, um, who you're representing here?
Yeah, thank you, Mister Chairman, uh, my name is Richard Reed, I represent Lighthouse Land Surveying. Um, I wanted to uh also add, I know we didn't have a chance to show the actual site plan. Um, I do have my CAD file here that, um, that all this information was collected from. And I did locate the hotel, um, I, if, if it pleases, uh, the board, I definitely wouldn't mind showing you exactly. Uh, where the billboard is positioned, uh, proposed, um.
You should have the ability to share your screen if you'd like, just to restate that.
Awesome, thank.
Visually.
Let's see.
I managed to do it, but I make no promises otherwise.
His expertise succeeds mine, Mister Chair.
Um, hopefully you can see my CAD file here.
I do, I see it pretty, oh, it's just the, it's just the corner of the, uh, of the hotel, yes.
Yep, so, so the focus right here is where the billboard is, um, and then as I kind of pan back out. We can kind of see the limits of the hotel, um, as the young lady did point out, um, that it is. Uh, w- we found it a hundred and thirty-two feet off of the physical building, um, it's proposed twelve feet. Uh, off of the adjoining lot line, uh, the one thing that she did point out was that none of her. Windows for residents were at the end of the building. And if you notice that, uh, the building is technically further north of the physical location of the building. Beyond what would uh be interpreted as, um, the residence rooms. So unless someone were quite literally sticking their head out the window and looking far to the right toward the highway. They probably wouldn't even see the visible location of the billboard. Um, but, a- again, certainly trying to present those facts, um. We, I, I don't, unfortunately, I don't have that, uh, uh, that graphic that, uh, um. Shows the lighting directions, but that's something that we could certainly interject and throw on there as well. Cause I think the, the graphic did show that the, um, the uh, direction did actually kind of clip. Um, whoops, uh, try this again, um. Clip the, the corner of that building, so technically, a- a- anything that was pointing in that direction would be pointing to the. Uh, very end of the building, barely, but.
And that, and that's based on the, the light limiting louvers. So it's, that's an enhancement, um, to the quote-unquote standard billboard.
Yes.
Um. And just to confirm, you're just from the, kind of, the site plan in the land surveying, you are not a lighting expert?
Nope, just basically showing the orientation of the, uh, of, of, of the info, it's, it's not adjacent to the. The, the residence windows, I mean, ultimately, you know, and, until you see the picture, the picture's worth a thousand words, so.
Yeah, understood, just making sure, uh. I try to know my role and make sure that I understand the role of the people who are speaking, so, uh, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, I do have one quick question.
Please.
The, the location of this, uh, being so close to the corner lot line, it's kind of being dictated. By the thousand-foot buffer from dwellings and in reasonable distance to the highway, I, I guess is the. There's no other option to move this to the left, um, there's no other possible place it could possibly go on this property, is what I'm getting at.
Um, unfortunately, the, uh, the wetlands, I'm not showing them right here, but the wetlands, uh. Are definitely impacting, um, moving it anywhere further west. Um, actually, I can turn it on real quick. Yeah, quite simply, we have a, the wetlands that follow along the highway, and then ultimately, there's that. Uh, section of wetland that's basically in the middle of the property. And we, we certainly have, trying to respect the Conservation Commission's, uh, buffer zones themselves.
Is it, so that's the boundary of the wetlands, and then is there a buffer beyond that, correct?
We're within the hundred-foot buffer zone, so that's the subject of our conservation, uh, uh, notice of intent.
Perfect, thank you.
So no activity is planned conservation-wise within the bu, within the wetlands itself, but we do impact. We are within the hundred-foot buffer, so that, uh, traditionally, and by regulation, we need to go before. Uh, conservation, which that application is pending, just so that they can impose, um, uh, restrictions on. Um, our construction activities if we go forward, so that they don't negatively impact the bordering vegetated wetlands.
Understood. Thank you, that does, that does help, uh, clarify the location and, and that, from that perspective. Um, Alan, is there anything further that you wanted to discuss in terms of the location within the site?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay.
Uh, Mister Chair, just one question, if we.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just one question. If we do go forward with a peer review of any sort. I I would like them to evaluate the site as well for wetlands. Just to make sure that the applicant's not overlooking any dry land further further west, cause it is an L-shaped property and. Uh I guess if you scroll up to the top left, um. I'm looking at my own um map, uh GeoMap right now on a different screen, and it's kind of hard to do it, you know, in the middle of this call, but.
We have had our wetland scientists walk through full property and we we only are showing you the information that's relative adjacent to the. Um the proposed work, but um the wetland does follow along four ninety-five to the north. Unfortunately, it does fall well within that thousand-foot uh buffer zone for the residential. Hence the reason why we tried to start here first to to try to uh deal with that. Cause you're right, it is L-shaped, this.
Is there any wetlands right where you have that that bullseye right there?
No.
That's within the, that's within the thousand feet of residence.
Yeah, and we we do not desire to go before the zoning board to request any relief from that thousand-foot. Uh requirement that's in your bylaw, and for this reason, just because. The town may grant a variance for that thousand feet for its bylaw. Doesn't mean the state's gonna adhere to that because their regulations are separate and distinct. So the location that we've shown, Mr. Chair, is the location we desire. Could it go a few feet one way or the other? Obviously, from that, but we have no intention of relocating on the must-have property.
Understood.
It would just, there are no other abutters uh here except for maybe across the highway and that's what's a little unique with this particular um. Digital billboard is on on the other one, there were no abutters across the highway at all, but we have. A pretty densely populated street across the highway, which I don't know if the ninety-foot-high billboard is gonna cast any concerns on them, but. Uh I'm guessing perhaps they weren't notified because technically they're not abutters, but um it could be affected with their. Quality of life, so but with the previous billboard we approved, there were no abutters on either side of the highway. That um, you know, a lot of it is town-owned land, some of it is uh wetlands and that kind of thing, so I I guess. I'm guessing we're not voting on this tonight, um and maybe if the applicant. You know, may wanna look at uh avoiding the concerns of uh the extended stay America folks. And see if there's any opportunity to move to farther west, that would may probably make everybody happy, but also, Paul, I don't know. If we should, just out of courtesy, notify the folks on uh off of King Philip Drive on the other side of the highway. In case they have any concerns as well.
Paul, do we have an abutters list of who is notified?
Uh I don't know that I have it digitally. I'd have to go into the office and and look.
This uh I have the the Bing maps listed here as well, and you can kind of see that uh. Those are butters, that one house that we are trying to maintain at thousand-foot buffer is one of the only. Uh that's the closest one, whereas the nearest abutter. Uh the buildings themselves are easily fifteen fifteen-hundred feet away. Uh they're they're the residents on Went Lake Winnicott. So we have plenty of vegetation and and uh. Tree clearances, if you will, uh even if I would contend that even at ninety feet. Um they'd be hard-pressed to see anything from Winnicott.
Yep, thank you, and and maybe, Paul, we just. Notify that uh one resident that he has the line drawn to or something. I know, I mean technically, the state owns the highway land, right? So they're the the abutter. Um anybody on the other side of the highway is technically not an abutter, so you probably, you probably didn't notify them.
Yeah, I I just did a quick look um using our our assessor's map, and there's a. A way to calculate the abutters list from that, and it didn't cross. Uh it didn't cross four ninety-five.
Okay. Based on the distance from the billboard, there shouldn't be a whole lot of. And the lighting study, there shouldn't be a whole lot extending that far. Given how the light bleeds off. But it would certainly be in their field of view. From their property. Did you have something that you wanted to add?
I'm sorry, did you address that to me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I thought you were looking to add something.
Oh, yeah, I would, uh you know, the on the on the subject of further notice, the board can do what it wants, but. If it does give additional notice, please note my objection because, you know, the statutory notice was given, it wasn't provided by. My client or me, it was done by your assessing board, so that to. Have an additional notice requirement that is just because the board wants to, I think, is contrary to my client's interest in. Not warranted under the the Enabling Act in Chapter forty-eight, so if you do do that, please note my objection for the record, Mr. Chairman.
Understood. I don't think we were intending to impose um an additional. Notice notice requirement on. You or your client. I think it was um meant to be more of an informal. Note sent to that resident, potentially. But understood your objection, um and you're not responsible for generating the list. The town is, so we understand. Mr. Reed, if you don't mind, if you could, I'm not sure if you have anything further, if you wanna just take down that virtual hand raise there. Um just so it, I keep catching it out of the corner of my eye and wondering who who's ready to speak. Not that I don't wanna hear you speak any, speak any, speak further, but.
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, okay. So, members of the board, um anything further that we want to ask of the applicant at this time? Um is there any action that we want to take? Um either regarding this application as a whole? Or specific pieces of it, um whether that is. Motion for approval or a motion for a continuance?
All motion to approve.
Thank you, Steve, for the motion. Is there any second on the motion to approve at this time? I would say that that motion fails for lack of a second. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh through you, um it's, it seems to me that the board is requiring some additional information. If that is the case, what date would the board consider continuing this matter to?
That would be something that we would discuss. Paul, I believe our next meeting is in two weeks, is that correct? On the eighteenth, or is it on the twenty-fifth because of the holiday on the Monday?
Uh we're showing it as the.
It's the eighteenth.
The eighteen, okay. So the eighteenth would be our next meeting. Given, I think, depending on the type of information that we would be looking for, that may or may not be appropriate. Um so that's something for the board, that's something for the board to discuss.
Sure, by the eighteenth, Mr. Chairman, we 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 can get you, obviously, uh the revised site plan showing. Or superimposing the lighting survey on it, so it'd be easy for the members to uh read and ascertain. Um so we can do that by by that date if the board desires.
Thank you, Mr. Minution.
And Chair, just i- 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 you know, for your information, if you decide to direct us to go for a peer review. It would probably be unlikely, a peer reviewer.
I would, that would, yes, I was going to say that a peer review would take. Probably, we would have to look for a firm, select a firm, have them look at it and get back to us, which would take. Uh several weeks.
Yeah, and uh well, typically, too, in a contract, a peer reviewer wants between fourteen and twenty-one days to review and then provide comments. Um we can move pretty quickly. I I'd have to find, I'm I'm not familiar with lighting engineers, but we can move pretty quickly and reach out to some. Uh I'd like to get a few, I always like to get a few estimates, but um. So we can move pretty quickly if that's a direction, we can certainly try to. Uh get a peer reviewer interested and hopefully under contract within a short amount of time.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, just to make it clear, I'm not stuck on a peer review either. Obviously, we just got that lighting study. Um and maybe if it was put on a plan. Um maybe there's one in there that I didn't say, I've only scanned it quickly. Obviously, we just got it yesterday. Um and see how it lays out, how the, with those louvers, how it lays out. With the building and where the actual rooms are in the building, uh maybe that is more helpful.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, through you to uh suggest a course of um. Action for the board in terms of uh procedurally, uh and then the board can either. Decline it or uh adopt it or massage it any way they want. Um I would respectfully request that you continue this matter. To the meeting in two weeks. Uh by that time, we'll have superimposed the uh lighting. Study on the site plan for the board's consideration. Uh during that time, if the town planner is uh is so kind, he could. Uh get some quotes for engineering reviews uh for the specific purpose for the of the lighting. But if at that time in two weeks the board determines it does not need it, then it could. Close a public hearing and take whatever action it desires, uh or it could request the lighting study. Does that sound like a reasonable approach, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you for your thoughts, Mr. Minution. Um I think that generally makes sense to me in terms of an order of operations. Paul, do you have anything that uh any concerns in that respect from your perspective?
The only one I'm just thinking of immediately with that is, you know, we're gonna ask them to put a a a bid together, you know, an estimate together. Uh but there's a possibility we won't use the firms, and I I mean, we can make it clear that it may. May not happen, uh but I have to be very clear with them that that. You know, it's possible you may opt not to go with a peer reviewer, but otherwise. Um I'll do my best to get get a couple, at least two. Uh two uh bids, for lack of a better term. It's not, we don't go through a bidding process for engineering, just so everyone's clear. Engineers we can directly work with and not required to go through bidding processes, but we'll get a couple. You know, we'll do our best to get a couple of estimates.
Okay.
This is true. Is this something that everybody on the board is looking for? Because I'm okay without it. I mean, it needs to be saving the planner some time uh for something if we don't end up using it.
Understood. Uh I'll defer to the board at large on that. Whether we want. Paul to go forward and. See what a peer review would look like for a project like this. Or whether we want to, um whether we don't feel it's necessary at this time.
I I I'm not uh partial to um having a peer review, to be honest with you. What I I would like to do is see. What the sign looks from the ground up and what those kind of like uh. Light barriers would appear, you know, especially on the side adjacent to the hotel. Maybe from a a ground-up perspective rather than near an aerial shot, and then the only the only other thing I would ask. Paul, perhaps, is to, since they are kind of working their plan. Around the the thousand-foot uh distance from the neighbor across the street, across the highway. That we should probably, since since that residential address is sensitive to this project, we should probably. Out of courtesy, notify them of this uh, you know, extension of the public hearing, so they can at least. Over the next couple of weeks, and they can join the meeting on the eighteenth and voice any concerns that they may have, and the address is uh. Ninety-two King Philip Drive, or King Philip Road, uh directly across the street. So, and if if the owners of that property wanna recruit their neighbors uh out of concern that they'll have. Visual impact from other homes, and they can do that on their own, but at least uh that address, I think we should reach out to and notify them.
Understood, Kevin. So.
Mr. Chairman, just with regard to that, again, please note my formal objection on that point also.
I understand your objection, yes. Understood and noted. So, um Kevin and Steve, both of you have said that you're not generally in favor of moving forward a peer review on the lighting study. Um Alan or Wayne, do you have feelings one way or another from that perspective? Or is the, having the plan superimposed on, uh the lighting plan superimposed on kind of the formal plan? Give you kind of what you're looking for at this stage?
It would be, for me, yes. Yeah, I'm looking at page three of the lighting study, and if we could show that on the site plan. Um and then if we could locate the rooms um that would possibly be affected, if that's possible. I think that would give us all the information that we would need.
Okay. And, Mr. Minution, I think something that may also be helpful is kind of that package. Um is. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the the louver system that we've been discussing is proprietary to Watchfire, correct?
I believe so, but Steve, can you opine on that?
Yes, so Watchfire has a very good product, uh and has other companies also do have the light-blocking louvers. And I can get a more detailed um description of what they are, and I can also try to have someone. Uh from their company explain it uh better than I can. Uh it's very effective, and I will give as much information to the the board as is needed.
Sure, yeah, I'm I'm sure that, being somebody who's in sales and marketing, I'm sure they have a sales and marketing. Deck that has a lot of the photos and standard kind of overviews. Um that they could provide to you or Mr. Minution to present or. In whatever way they feel is appropriate. But because it's a, from what how I understand, the the lighting study that they sent, it's a proprietary system, so. Um if it's a. Have it, working in sales and marketing, I know what sales and marketing people do, so uh I wanna hear, I wanna see what they're saying.
Absolutely, I'll get the information.
Okay. Um so. If the over, if the general feeling is that we don't want to move forward with a. Um a peer review inquiry at this time, um the next action would be to. Uh potentially continue this to our next meeting, correct?
Go ahead, Alan, I'll stop talking.
Special permit, one, two, five, eight, seven, to the eighteenth.
Thank you, Alan, for the motion, and Steve for the second. Are there any further discussions? Remember, it's the board with the motion. Okay. Hearing none. Wayne, I'm gonna start with you this time.
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So we are continued until the eighteenth. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What time would that be?
Uh that should be, the meeting should start at the same time, yes. Um I will admit to not knowing what else is on the agenda this evening at this time.
No problem. Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that hearing takes it, the end of the continuation of that hearing is the last item posted orange into this evening. Um Paul, is there any other business that you wanted to discuss at this point? I'm not sure if there was any action taken regarding the vacancy on the board, or whether we're just kind of waiting until April.
We've put word out and nobody, uh I checked with the clerk today, and there's, she hasn't received anything.
Okay.
And she will be reaching out to. And she will be reaching out to, well, Kevin and Julie, um, you know, obviously, uh, your tur- you know, your terms are up in April, so she'll be getting the paperwork out for that, you know, in the next, you know, short amount of time.
Um, i- is Town Hall open right now for general business?
Mm-hmm.
It's just the meetings that are remote, okay.
Yeah, right. Right, so right now, or me, yeah, everything, people can still come in.
Okay. Anybody, is it, is there anything further you wanted to discuss with the board at this point?
Uh, other than, I, my expectation is we'll probably be virtual in two weeks, but if the Board of Health tells us it's okay, and obviously, we need to make sure that we are, uh, notified within our posting time, so, um, but we'll, we'll let you know as it gets updated, but, um, at this point, I would expect we'll be virtual again.
Okay, and certainly, uh, cases have not gone down over the last week, so it's, uh, certainly.
Right, and, uh, that's, you know, uh, and just so people know too, uh, the booster shots are available at Town Hall, you would just need to call the, uh, the Board of Health nurse and then schedule an appointment.
I believe she sent out another, I believe she sent out another email today.
She did.
Yesterday, um, but yeah, I'd, um, I took advantage of that, I think, right before the holiday, it was really easy, and I didn't have to go somewhere with a whole bunch of other people, so, worked really well.
Yep, I got boosted on December fourteenth at Walgreens in Norton, so I'm not worried about Omicron of business, I'm going out on my daily life, going to all the meetings, sporting events, and taking my trips, and get boosted and get back to it, and I'm hoping that the case will go down after once the Omicron is open, that we can get back to in-person meetings, right?
Do you really want to see me again in person, Peter, I mean, really?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Chair, just so that, so Paul, the town planner has direction one way or another, just an administrative request, I, I would like to make a motion that you reach out to the owners of that, uh, um, abutter, if you would, you know, who's close to a thousand feet from this proposed project, um, just as a courtesy, does not need an official notification, just something, a phone call or an email is fine. Ninety-two King Philip Road is the address, and Myers is the last name, so I just wanted to make that motion. If the board doesn't agree with me, that's fine, but I, I want to make sure Paul knows where he stands, one way or another, on my request.
Easy enough for us to do, so.
Okay.
Um, uh, we can get it out, um, I'm, I'm actually out most of tomorrow, but we can get it done by, out, mailed out by, uh, Thursday.
Okay. Any, anybody object to that? Thank you, Paul.
I don't hear any objections.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay. Didn't you have any other business you'd like to discuss? Then I'm gonna sit here and say nothing, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Steve, for the motion, and Wayne for the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Wayne, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay, and I will vote yes. Thank you very much, everyone. We will be on again in two weeks.